Are you Frank?
Hi.
How are you tonight?
Good.
Lovely day.
Looks like a forum. That's a good day. All right, we can call the meeting to order. Today is May 16th of 2019. It's 6:33 PM. Tim Straz?
Here.
Ed Como?
Here.
Gary Chikaroni? Terry Ward?
Yes, here.
Rips Errett? And Dave Champion is here. All right, we don't have any alternates to the point. And we have a forum. Public comments. Diane, welcome.
Thank you. You may retract up a minute. I understand that you guys are still facing some challenges. And so I, in advance, apologize for bringing up an issue that I'm afraid, well, I wanted to bring it to the planning board. I'm also going to bring it to the board of selectmen. And what really precipitated this was an ad that I saw, a real estate ad by Maxfield Real Estate for the Brookfield Corner Farm. And it says, "Perfect for the equestrian enthusiast, car collector, innkeeper, farmer, antique dealer, or event planner." I'm thinking, okay. This is not agritourism. These are not issues related to the farm, the establishment. And then that raised the flag on the Red Barn. And long behold, there was another, there was an event there, a public event. There were little signs posted around town, either under 109, for Monday, May 6th. Explore Moose Mountains. It was a public event. People were invited. The public was invited. And it was a celebration for Explore Moose Mountains, which was an outgrowth of the Moose Mountain Regional Alliance to support tourism. Where I got additional information on that was from SRPC in their news blurb that they send out every week, bits and pieces. So I know, I recall that about a year, maybe a year and a half ago, you, David, had suggested that we talk about agritourism. And we never got to that because other things got in the way. So I remember, and I kept actually, despite the fact that I've put almost all my planning board stuff in storage, that there was a Supreme Court decision that had come out. And I had kept an email that had come through George Plan Link, sort of email, in 2015. So I looked it up, and I found it, and I looked up the actual court decision. Spent some time with that. The thrust of this is that... And I also looked at, thank you, by the way, for posting the results of the survey on the webpage. And the way that Tim had integrated the comments that I had summarized. And I was reminded that on, I think it was the question where we had asked in different areas, what townspeople might want to see change or different. I can't remember exactly how it was phrased. But under zoning, some people had commented, a few people had commented about creating a commercial zone on 109, or maybe it was just in general. And the other was addressing commercial use of farms. Or something of that nature. I don't have it in front of me. So this boils down to what folks think that they can do. Because evidently, the folks at Brookfield Corner Farm or Maxfield thinks that you can have an inn in Brookfield, which you apparently cannot. That's actually specifically excluded in our zoning ordinance. Can't be, can't have an antique business there. Can't do event planning. Well, unless you're, you can do the planning, you just can't have your event. And it's just, it's really not clear. So I went back, and it turns out that the statute related to that, and in our zoning ordinance, we have defined agritourism, agriculture and agritourism per the state statute. It has changed since, maybe not since 2017, when this was last updated. But I think it changed since we drafted the original wording here on page three. Farms, farming, agriculture, blah, blah, agritourism, garden activities are permitted in the residential agricultural zone as permitted uses. I think that we need to get our, as a town, we need to understand what is permitted and what isn't. And frankly, no offense to the folks with the Red Barn, that doesn't fit the definition by the Supreme Court ruling of agritourism. It's a business. It's a venue. There have been way more activities there than weddings. And even weddings weren't even permitted. That was what, that was what the court case was about in Henniger. And the Supreme Court with one dissenter struck it down or sided with the lower court ruling to not allow it. Now, had their zoning permitted it, it would have been okay. It wouldn't have gone to court. But the zoning didn't permit it, much like ours. It relied on the definition of the state, as I recall. So my, the planning board, correct me if I'm wrong, has no enforcement authority that rests with the board of selectmen. But I will be bringing this to the board of selectmen at their next meeting because I think that they have not been enforcing the zoning. And by the way, the statute that is referenced in the Supreme Court ruling, which is RSA 21:34-A, and then they follow it with the Roman numeral six. Well, six was repealed since then because I printed this today. And I don't know if it was in 2016 or 2014. No, it would have been 14 because the court case was settled in '15. At any rate, there is still, it's still defined agritourism. It's just in a different section. It's under number five. So I'm going to leave you this information that I collected. And I'm not, I'm asking that, in the midst of all the stuff that you're working on, that you at least give some consideration to this in the context of, maybe not in the context of the master plan. Well, yeah, I guess it would be in the context of the master plan. But specifically, perhaps working in concert with the board of selectmen to just come to a resolution on how it is that people are not following the zoning. And don't get me wrong, I support that activity. It's just not permitted for our zoning ordinance. So, thank you.
Thank you. As far as the real estate agent goes, with my experience with real estate over a number of years, purchasing different pieces of land, many times, realtors would put in information that is false information and mislead people in purchasing property. Therefore, it is in the best interest of the proposed purchaser of the land to do their research and come to the town and ask questions. We've had a piece of property before that they misadvertised at one time, and they came to the board two or three years ago. They had asked questions about what could the land be used for. They also did the same thing with Moose Mountain Recreation as they came to the board and asked the questions, which is the right thing to do. Not all realtors are up to date with all the town zoning. And I can definitely reach out to the individual that's got this advertisement and ask her to review our zoning because it could be misleading to a potential buyer.
But I think it's the perception that has been fostered by the activity up the street.
It could, it could be.
Mr. Chairman, was it Maxfield?
Yes.
And where's this farm? No, is this?
The corner.
Right on the corner.
The Murphy's farm. Oh, okay, all right. So you're not talking about Dave's, you know, property.
Well, that was part of it.
Okay, that was the second part, right? The second part of your discussion?
Yes.
Okay. I was confused which farm you were talking about. Now you went from one to the other.
Well, it was, thought process started with that ad. And then I was like, okay, all this, why is that?
So we need to revisit something.
Do you have the agritourism RSA?
Yeah, I did. Yeah, I got it. RSA 21:34-A.
Well, the buyers and real estate agents are the ones that needs to do their homework every day.
Well, the bigger issue is not, my concern isn't so much for that particular property as...
In general?
The Red Barn issue is, was difficult as I wasn't, I didn't get involved in that when that all started happening. But I understand that there were, there was some discordant back and forth on that. But if you follow the Supreme Court ruling, it's not, it's not an accessory use for a farm with respect to agritourism. If it was, so if it was, you know, commercial operation, it was a commercial, there's no issue.
Well, it can't be a farm and an entertainment facility at the same time.
Yeah, it can be if the zoning, if the local zoning allows it, as I understand.
So I put a note down for our new business for the next meeting to review agritourism, the RSA, and see how it compares with our current ruling as well. I'm also aware that there have been incidences, not only in this town, but other towns where it's very difficult to enforce certain things. There was an incident in a town down south. They had a number of vehicles in their yard that weren't registered. And they had something in the zoning saying you can have X number of cars that have to be registered to be property. And the town really didn't have any way to reinforce it. So it's difficult. You know, you can send letters to them. You can tell them that they're not following the town zoning. But there's certain RSAs that govern what the town can do to enforce zoning as well. So just take that and understand that it might be difficult for the selectmen to also follow through with it. But we'll definitely, we'll talk about it some more. So appreciate it.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Mr. Chairman, just for the record, the Henniger situation, I have it on videotape if you wanted to watch it. I went to Henniger and recorded that.
Oh, interesting.
Their planning board, as they went through the process of dealing with...
After the court decision?
It was way before the court decision. It started it, yeah.
Interesting.
I thought it would be interesting to capture such a thing because it's going to affect a lot of people in the state. And it went into the legislature, and it went through the Supreme Court. And so it, it's very interesting to watch if you were interested.
Ed, where can I find that video?
I believe it's under Planning, and it says Henniger Planning Board.
Okay. Do you have a timeframe?
No, I think it's, I think it's the only one that recorded.
Okay. Thank you.
It was a very stressful planning board.
I bet. I bet they have grown pains. Find it, is it interesting?
Yeah, I mean, there's the definition in here. You know, which, what's happening, tumbled down, seems to be within what the planning board book describes for agritourism. So I'll have to, we'll discuss it more.
Yep, definitely.
It's on page 24.
I think what I'll do is I'll send out a little help file. Well, I have the page number on the inside of the crease there. Page 24.
Oh, I thought 674:32-A was...
Yes, it is. But it's not. It starts on the page before.
Gotcha.
In the actual, it's about two-thirds of the way down in the left column on the definition. It's for five. I'll send an email out to the members to review RSA 21:34-A prior to the next meeting. So we can at least all be up to speed where that's at. I'm not looking at it the first time during the meeting.
Yes.
All right.
Right, another public comment. Are we going to talk about the master plan tonight? Or are we going to start holding meetings again? And earlier in the month, that's what we were going to do.
So we are going to, we were going to discuss potentially changing the meeting to Monday. So later on in the discussion, where actually we're talking about, we did hire somebody to transcut. Well, you know that because she's going to be working.
I know that, and the selectman officially, she, her background checks came back on Tuesday night. And so the selectmen voted to hire her. So she's, she's not officially a town employee yet, but should be any day now, but...
For the record, since our new administrative assistant is listening, did you state your name?
Frank Berger.
Just so she knows so she can have you state your name.
I do not, Diane Smith.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Anyone want to comment? So Diane, still welcome. But you...
Thank you.
All right. Announcements and correspondence mail. Unfortunately, I had to kill a bunch of trees and print out a bunch of stuff before the meeting, and I haven't got a chance to go through our mailbox. I'm sure there's a copy of the convene in there. I did see the nice plastic envelope sitting in there. So I will have that out here in our general area. So, housekeeping. One of the things Ed and I have been working, and Diane as well, thank you very much again. So I reached out to Diane and asked her to do some minutes for us for a meeting that she had attended because we had been falling behind due to some administrative assistance challenges that we've had. So she has put together some meeting minutes. And I put together some meeting minutes. And Priscilla. So we have meeting minutes that consist of three different people. So unfortunately, I made a mistake in the agenda when I was on item six. Review of possible approval of January 17th, February 21st, March 7th, March 21st. That should not say April 2nd. We had talked about having a meeting April 4th, and that meeting did not take place. That should actually say May 2nd. And April 18th meeting minutes. Priscilla was kind enough to get me the March 21st minutes as of about 6 o'clock. So she finished those today. And that was very unfair to her, and I asked if she could do this this week. And I said, I didn't ask to have it done this week, but I asked if she could work on the meeting minutes. And I said, when you get to them, that's fine. And she was able to get the March 21st minutes to me today. So that was greatly appreciated. So now we get to fun of, we're going to go through our meeting minutes. We'll review the January 17th meeting minutes.
Can I ask a housekeeping question, please?
Absolutely, you're welcome.
Is there April 22th?
There are not. That's what Priscilla was working on.
Okay, great. So we're not going to discuss that tonight.
Correct. Oh, thank you, buddy.
You have an agenda, right? You have an agenda?
I have nothing. Well, I have the agenda on the phone, yes. But it was an email. So that's something I should put forward to when we meet. Put together the stuff.
We hopefully will not have as many trees die. Again, we had fallen behind. We wanted to make sure that we were up to date.
Thank you very much.
One more housekeeping thing. Are we going to approve each minute as we go?
Yes. And only because we have so many to do, I think it'd be wise just to, we'll make the motion to accept each minute after we're done reviewing. So the first one's January 17th. This is a planning board meeting, a public hearing that we had. I'm staying from this because I wasn't even here.
Yes.
I think so it was a busy night.
Return the motion and then the vote. Then he's going to say any abstentions and any abstentions.
Are we going to make the motion that we accept the January 17th, 2019 minutes as presented?
I will second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Abstentions.
Abstentions?
Yeah.
Thank you. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Hearing none, motion carries. Okay, February 22nd, 2019.
Would you like to oppose the accept the February 21st minutes as presented?
Second.
And just to be clear for those watching, the minutes are defining that we had no meeting. So that's why it's easy enough to review this quickly. Any abstentions? Oh, yes. Sorry. All in favor, except for the minute, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Hearing none, motion carries. March 7th, 2019. This was a master plan working session?
I'd like to propose we accept the March 7th, 2019 minutes as presented.
Do I have a second?
Second, I might have a correction here on page two. Or it's a suggestion. It says on line two, D. Smith, should we change that to Diane Smith? Just for record or, and it's up to you, it's not really that big of a deal.
Well, I think we, the initials, first initial, last name has been used.
True.
Yeah.
Okay, that's fine, I just mentioned it.
And it does, it does state the numbers attending, it says Diane Smith, so. Okay, so I have a motion, second from Ed. Any extensions?
Yeah, we'll stop here. So I'm staying, I guess.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. March 21st, 2019. This is a scheduled meeting. I realize there may be some discussions pertaining to these notes. Priscilla did these notes, she did a very detailed job, but there were some times that she didn't have names for people.
Is this streetwear right here somewhere?
Oh, I'm sorry, I sent you.
So the motion.
Before we go on, I voted in the affirmative for the Thursday, March 7th meeting minutes, and I was absent that day, so I have to rescind that. You could put me under power of staying.
Can you say it again?
The March 7th. It should be the one we just did.
So you're an absentee for that one?
Yes.
Okay. Yep, so you're right there.
So I'll make a motion, Mr. Chairman, to accept the direct meeting minutes of March 21st, 2019.
I second. Discussion.
Yes. Under section two, was there a selectman here? I'm not recalling who was here. There's a question mark here.
Mrs. Zacker was here.
He was here.
Yeah. So I'll remove where it says selectmen. Perfect, Rick Sacker.
And in section seven, under new business, it's up to you, it just says Diane, question mark, I would assume it should say Diane Smith.
Yes. I made that notation as well. And it'll be on page two.
She should be listed as public also. On the roll call, sorry.
Well, she isn't listed as a roll call.
Oh, actually, no, that was, that was discussion. The reference to her, right?
Yes. So she was here during the meeting.
Well, before we started. So I, she doesn't need to be in the public. She left before we'd been in the meeting. But the references in here are not to her comments, they're to this discussion points.
Okay, so are you saying that under public comments, we should have her identified here and put that on the public comments? Or this was our discussion?
This was our discussion, I take back what I said about adding her to the list.
Okay, so I'm going to change Adam and seven to Diane Smith. So identify her. And also on page two.
The last paragraph.
Yeah, right. Ed, you have anything you want to make a notation of?
Yes, on old business at the top, it just says November 29th. I just think it should say November 29th, 2018. So we don't get that confused for the future.
Yep. Agreed. Okay, so I have a motion, I have a second, but we'll do a motion to add them in then.
I have a couple of comments also.
Okay. Go ahead.
A reorganizational meeting. Mr. Camo made a motion, which is in the middle of the paragraph, second by Mr. Champy to have their reorganization on April 18th, 2019. And it says, Mr. Strasfeld, reorganization should take place tonight. Mr. Camo withdrew his motion, Mr. Champy withdrew his second. I would like to add, after discussion, Mr. Strasfeld, reorganization should take place, because there was discussion. It wasn't a, I didn't make this decision and then everybody decided they wanted to follow suit.
Okay, so after, so Mr. Champy withdrew his, his second.
At the end of April 18th, 2019.
Yep.
Say after discussion, comma, Mr. Strasfeld, reorganization should take place tonight. And then the only other change would be under member comments. Where it says, Mr. Strasfeld, the board that the survey results were sent to the Selectments Administrative Assistant this morning. This next sentence I'd like to amend is, they are comprised of categorized comments for questions they did not have. It's actually, should read, they are comprised of categorized comments for several questions, period. We had the questions.
Remove that they do not have.
Right. We had the questions and we were just providing the comments.
Yes. Good point.
That's all.
Okay. So at this point, we have a motion and a second, we have a motion to accept the minutes as amended and a second. We've had discussion. Are we all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Abstentions too, as well. You were here, right, so no extensions. All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Hearing none. If you care, if you want to accept it.
May second.
All right, May second. 2019. This was my oops. I did not post this meeting. There was some confusion because during the April 18th meeting, we had discussed potentially changing the meeting to Monday. I think there was some confusion with some of the members as well. My confusion was, I wasn't here and didn't post the meeting. So simply enough to say that we had talked about having the meeting on May 2nd, but we didn't have the meeting, so we're just going to put something in the book to recognize that we didn't have the meeting. So.
It's not really necessary, it wasn't, if it wasn't posted, it wasn't scheduled, then it's not reasonable, it didn't happen.
Right. Then Member Turek Ward needs to know where to look to find out if they're missing a meeting.
Well, it wasn't a regular third, Thursday of the month either, so.
It would have been a working session.
Correct.
So the question is, do we feel that we need to put the meeting minutes in it? What I'm hearing right now is, these aren't minutes, just acknowledging that we didn't have the meeting. We don't want to get into the habit of putting non-meetings in the book.
Correct.
So.
Well, this, that was supposed to be, that was supposed to be planning for the working session. Yeah, the working session anyway, so do you have to post those as well?
Yes. Whenever there's a quorum of any government.
No, okay, well, there's definitely no quorum, because.
Correct. The only one we did make minutes for was the one where we almost had a quorum and we showed up, so.
Right, that was a scheduled meeting, that was posted.
Yep.
This is not.
Okay. Done. All right. Unfortunately, we have to fill out the entries. All right, so the April 18th minutes, Priscilla said that she would take care of those minutes and get them off to us, so we'll review those at the next meeting. I did have them on our agenda, but I didn't expect her to even get to March 21st, it was the very last minute to contact her, because I got the, what date we get that approval from this selectman, that was.
Tuesday.
It's Tuesday. Yeah, I didn't think it was fair to tell her Tuesday, can you have them done by Thursday? But she did get the March ones done, so that was extremely appreciated.
This is the woman from Wakefield?
Yes.
Priscilla.
Yep. So that being said, new business. We'd like to welcome Priscilla to the Board as temporary assistant to the Planning Board to assist with the transcribing of the meeting minutes. It's greatly appreciated that she's willing to help out, and Ed, thank you as well for making that connection. That was greatly appreciated. So she will be picking up the meeting minutes from the video at this point. Because the next thing on our new business is to talk about changing the meeting to the third Monday. The reason why we didn't do it at the last meeting is because we didn't have particular people here. You said it worked for you, seven o'clock Monday. Carrie said it worked for him. Works for me. Tim wasn't here, so we want to check with Tim while you're at this meeting, does that work for you?
I think that'd be fine.
Okay. So the only other person we need to reach out to is Rick Saret.
Gary?
Gary's the one that had suggested. Third Monday, right? Third Monday of the month, yep.
That was the original piece of time.
Yes.
From a while ago, wasn't it?
Yes.
And the website will have to be updated.
And a lot of things in our rules and procedures will need to be updated as well. So I'm just making a notation here.
As it is now, we're still going to be on June 20th, right?
So yes, as it is right now, our regular meeting will be the third Thursday, June 20th. We are not, I think what we should do is we should verify with all the members, make sure that everybody can make it for the Monday. Once we can verify it, I think it'd be best to have a motion to change the meeting. So I just want to verify with Rick, because he's the last one that we need to talk to. As far as the working session goes for the master plan. Right now, that'll be Thursday, the 6th. I'm going to make a proposal that we change the master plan as well to Monday. That way we can stay consistent if we do a Mondays, it's the second Monday and the third Monday. But again, just to confirm, nobody come here on June 3rd. Because we haven't agreed to this yet.
Okay. Did you hear that?
And they're both seven o'clock right now. That's the plan.
Oh, I didn't hear that.
So we talked about seven o'clock on Thursday for you to get back from the State House, right?
No, it was because of the school board.
Oh, that's right, school board.
Okay. At seven o'clock, perfect.
Seven on Monday, seven on Thursday.
And that's the planning board, the planning meeting too for the master plan, right, is also seven o'clock?
That's what we're hoping to do, yes.
Okay. Makes it easier to remember if they're all at the same time.
Yep.
Yeah. So the work session. June 6th.
Yes. So we're going to stick with the Thursdays for now until we have a motion to accept.
So we have to work for it, we have to be here for that, right?
I can reach out to him as well. And then I could send him an email and say, this is what the board has been talking about, does this work for you? And then I could send him an email and say, "This is what the board has been talking about, does this work for you?" If he says it does, at the next meeting, I can basically reiterate what he says. If it works for him, or if it doesn't, then we can make a motion.
So, that's on the agenda. We'll get to it tomorrow, next time then.
New business, we'll do that, yep. All right, 35 minutes is game time.
I have another new business very quickly.
Yeah.
I spoke at the last meeting about the statutory requirement for the Planning Board to conduct the gravel pit inspections.
Yes.
Apparently, the way we've been doing it doesn't seem to be working very well. We don't seem to get anything back or be able to contact the owners of the two pits quick enough to get the inspections done. So, what I did is, I took upon myself to make a self-addressed stamped envelope that all they have to do is basically open their envelope up. They get the pit inspection letter. I did change something in here, which this is a question. If I do change this form, then the rules of procedure, if we agree on this, should be also changed from the other changes we're going to have.
Correct.
What I did is, I changed, after the map and lot number, I added the instruction for the addressee to please return this self-addressed letter to the Planning Board. It will serve as permission to enter the pit location for inspection. So, all we have to do is just stick it in the mail. Nice and easy. Nice and easy. But, and I'm telling you this because this is one of our exhibits.
Yes.
And it's now different. So, I don't know if we have to, we have the authority, I'm assuming, to vote to temporarily change this, make a record that we've changed it in minutes, and then send this out. So, as soon as you give me that permission, I'll just send these out to all.
Yes, over. Trying to know what the picture thing looks like.
That's right here.
Do you want a copy of it?
Yeah, we need a draft copy before I pull it up. Looks like the very last sheet.
Well, that's the, oh, there's the letter. I just have a map copy of it. It's the very end of it. Appendix X is the one.
You've got subdivision, you've got a little subdivision.
It's like I took these written out. Two, three, four. Better than.
This is, Ed, this is a front letter. This form also has George Nekes, who is administrative assistant on the line.
Yes.
I had already changed that on this one, too. I had put my name on it since I was in front of me.
It's just another change to the.
It's good there's only two pits.
So, it looks like you included a map and lot, and then basically, what you said, that one sentence, "Please return this self-addressed letter to the Board, the service permission," so it's really the only thing, other than the person signing off on the bottom.
Did I add the map and lots number or?
Yes.
Yeah, the reason why I did that is because if there's ever an issue, they know that they agreed that their lot is what we were inspecting, so they don't get any possible issues. Which I don't see.
Is the expectation by them signing this letter and sending it back that we now have opportunity to enter their property?
Statutorily, he does not have to sign that. This is all a courtesy.
Okay.
Statutory requirement is that they are to be inspected.
Yes.
So, I'm saying, I'm not going to go on anybody's property without any permission.
Yep.
So, they don't have to sign it. That's why the letter to them that they put in the mail does not say, "Sign." It just says, "Return it."
Yes.
Very simple.
Yeah, yeah, it's actually, yeah, it works.
Now, you can change it if you wanted to put, if you wanted to have them sign it. But I'm trying to make, so it's easier, because it seems like the problem's always been that everybody's very busy and they just don't even have time to, you know. Plus, if you, if you read the old letter, it's very confusing. It doesn't really, it doesn't really say, "What am I supposed to do?" So, that's why I think they weren't responding, because it says, "We'll schedule it." We tried to call, it never would happen, we couldn't get in contact with them, and, you know.
So, the new letter's not asking for, to schedule an appointment. It's, it almost sounds like you're, by returning it, you're granting permission to examine it.
Yeah, and if they read the statute, what is it, 155E?
Yes.
If they read that, it specifies that.
Very. Well, in fact, like you said, if there's only two, it makes it easier. You can personalize it by putting your name on it instead of.
And I can assume you have this electronic, send a copy to me? All right. I think we should have a motion to accept this as the letter. And then I can update the rules of procedure.
Should we actually call it a working document? That way, if we want, I don't know if we should change all of our documents and find out if it doesn't work, if there's an issue with it, some legal issue or something, and then we have to change our procedure again. That way, if it's a working document that we're using as a test.
It's a trial document.
It's a trial.
Sure. Makes sense.
So, you're saying for the interim, to call it a working document? Send that out to get back if there's any issues with it, but leave this one here for now? I think that's, that's a good plan for. So, like to have a motion.
Okay, I'll make a motion to create a working document related to the gravel pit inspection letter and return for the 2019 pit inspections.
I'll second that.
Any discussion?
Is there a deadline as to the return?
It has to be done annually.
No, I mean, as far as, is there, I didn't notice, was there a date on them to return that?
I said, basically, I say in the letter that we're going to do it in June. That's it. We got June to do it, so.
So, he's got a couple of weeks to get it back to you or whatever.
Yes, well, yes.
I would like to add that we should add it to new business for July, June, rather, to follow up and see if we have received these.
Thank you, Tim.
Last item. Here we go.
Have you not? If I have a motion on the table. I have a second from Terry?
Yep.
We've had discussion? Now, all in favor, say aye? Aye. Opposed? Hearing none? Motion carries. Ed, go ahead, what do you have?
It went out of my head when it comes back, I'll tell you. Oh, that's it, very important. God, it's important. The last year's pit inspections are incomplete. And I just want it on record that only one of the two pits was actually inspected. So, we have to, I don't know how, I don't know if we should put a placeholder in there or create the document, but how would you do that if it's supposed to be done annually, but we didn't do it last one of the pits, we didn't do it last year? Because we couldn't get a hold of the person. So, I wouldn't know how to handle that at this point. Because if somebody, for instance, 91A requests the information, it's going to show that we did not do that one year. Now, I mean, it could be extenuating circumstances in anything, but we should admit that, that it didn't get done, and I don't know how we should handle that.
So, where we're filing the inspections, we should date the inspection for that particular pit and put, "No response from landowner, so inspection completed." And at least it's covered that we did send out a letter to the landowner, we tried to contact them, and there's no response.
Just for future reference, the statute's clear. It doesn't say, "You just try."
Yeah.
It is to be done.
Right, it's an annuals.
Exactly. Now, a lot of statutes are not followed because of the situations. So, I'm just saying, I want that on record that, you know, to admit that it didn't get done and that we put that placeholder in and we, there's nothing else we can do. I don't know, what do we do?
Well, maybe these letters need to go out by a certain time, and they need to be returned by a certain time. And if they aren't, the inspection will be done anyway.
Yeah.
I mean, it puts a deadline on that. Because it's, it's, right, there's only two, thank goodness. Makes it easy. It's like, and so, if it's not Tom, probably not getting back to you. I imagine it's the other gentleman that I don't know.
No, this one was done. This one must have done.
Really? He's around, I mean, he doesn't go anywhere.
It happens.
Yeah.
All I'm saying is that we should just, you know, for transparency and truth, we should just make sure that we've said that, so we, you know, don't let it happen again. But that's why I wanted it to be a working document, because now we know that that maybe needs to be clarified. If we choose at a later date, when reviewing the working document, that we want to add a deadline, but statutorily, practically we can, it just has to be done every year or so. But that could be another discussion at another time, so.
Do you mail those out?
If you wish me to, sure. It's all stamped already.
Please do. And you need reimbursement for the postage?
I'm not asking reimbursement for postage, so.
Just make clear about it. He's obviously overpaid.
No, I believe taxation's theft, so there you go.
Should a report be filed for the second pit stating, use the report form stating that it was not conducted in 2018 and then just file to conclude our discussion?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. I think we're going to, we're going to put it in with the report. I'm not sure where we're keeping them. I think they're in the file, I got it on the other end of the third floor.
Thank you.
So, those, do those need to be certified letters now, as I get today?
I do send them out certified letter and make sure they've received them. And like with this one, I received, I received last year, I received this certified back, but I did not receive this. I mean, it can happen, it could have gotten lost or something, you know, just never, don't know what happened.
All right, we need to revisit this for sure, then come down. So, I made a notation, Tim, that when they complete the 2018 Smith pit form and say that it wasn't, wasn't the 2018, and just put it in there?
I mean, historically, both pits have been in good order. And, and the pit up in Moose Mountain Properties LLC, which is a town down deck, is in excellent shape last year. So, just to continue, the, I'm sure the pit is fine. I'm just saying that we need to have some kind of trail or paper trail in case.
Sure we did do diligence.
Correct.
Well, it's in their best interest too, if it's in good standing, that we have a record that it is in good standing.
Yep.
I just had a thought. Ed, do you still have the certified, you know, receipt for the second pit for 2018?
It should, everything should be in the focus for that, for that year.
So, that can be attached to the report and?
Correct. Saying, stating that we did something to at least notify, even though that's not really the answer.
Yes. I did, yeah, for Mr. Fort.
Yep. Plus, we're going to have meeting minutes for May 16th, acknowledging that we discussed this, so.
Absolutely.
That'll help.
Yep.
Cool. Thank you very much for doing that.
Yeah.
Okay, so old business. I printed out the job description and job posting that was put in the newspaper. Last time, we had a vacant administrative assistant position. I'd like to speak with Frank and get the basic job description for what he's looking for, for ZBA, because we had all talked about incorporating the ZBA administrative assistant into the Planning Board Administrative Assistant. And I think that the job posting that goes in the paper should encompass the ZBA as well. Frank, on any chance, do you have a job posting or a job description for?
I believe it's on the website.
Okay.
I did do it, I, the answer is yes, I do, and I, it should, it was posted the last time when we, I, come on. How come it's not?
But you're not talking about.
The link is seen somewhere.
Right. But then you know what they're doing.
Is the job, Mr. Chairman, is the job description for the zoning board that different than the planning board?
Yeah, because the, 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 the ZBA doesn't have nearly the responsibilities that the planning board does, and it has, the main difference in the, I don't, I, I don't see it, so. It was, it's probably somewhere in the history. If not, I've got it at home, I will send it to you. It's also sporadic hours and not regular, not monthly meetings. So, that's, that's the big, the big difference. And I had proposed to, I think you guys have this selectman that we call it, the land, land use board's administrative assistant, the position. So, board's plural. And many towns do that. I believe Priscilla might have, she's, she's, I think, administrative assistant for Bartha Planning Board and their ZBA over there, I think. So.
I wonder if their ZBA.
Their ZBA meets fairly regularly over there, because they've got a lot of, they get a lot of work.
I'm wondering, what, what, do you know what day they meet over there?
No.
Because right now, they're meeting, and she's doing the minutes for Wakefield's planning board, so that's why we do Monday, she actually may be a lieutenant.
I'm not sure, I'm not sure. But I believe Priscilla told us that Mondays would be okay, right?
Yeah. Because Wakefield meets on Thursday? Oh, that actually makes it better for her than that we changed.
All right, so Frank, you'll send the?
I will send job description, yeah.
I will incorporate it.
And I have no problem with you incorporating it as best suits the combined position.
So, we'll have to change this Thursday to Monday if that's what we end up doing?
Right.
In that first line?
Yep. The, 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 Wakefield ZBA, according to their website, meets the third Monday at 7:00 PM on an as-needed basis. It does not say who the administrative assistant is, I don't see it here.
On an as-needed basis?
Yeah, it's if they've got a hearing, they meet, just like us. Just like our ZBA, they only meet when they need.
Oh, ZBA, oh, okay.
Not planning board ZBA, but it's a Monday. So, it's the third Monday, as needed.
And yours is still a Thursday, as needed?
What, the?
ZBA.
The Brookfield ZBA?
Yeah.
Usually, it's been Wednesdays.
Okay, so at least it's not Monday.
Whatever day.
Okay, so at least it's not Monday anyway, so it would free her up.
Yeah.
To do both if she had to.
Right.
Okay.
And if, if we did, if, or the next time that our ZBA has a hearing where I would actually like administrative support, so I don't have to take the minutes while I'm conducting a hearing, we would pick a date that she could, she could be there. She would be the determining factors when we set the date, along with other members, of course.
Yeah.
We're flexible.
Does the ZBA, Brookfield ZBA have a recorder? So if you have a meeting and I can't record it, you have the ability to audio record it, or does she get easily?
There was a very old one in the file. I'm not sure, but see, operable.
Well, if you're gonna have one, just tell me, and I'll try to get you a recorder.
Great.
Okay, so that's the plan going forward. If you'll get me the job description, we'll incorporate it in the newspaper posting, and we'll, we'll update our planning board administrative assistant, uh, job description as a land use boards administrative assistant.
Mr. Chairman?
Ed.
Is, do we know if this is a temporary position for the new administrative assistant, or is this something permanent? The reason why I say that is because if it's not permanent, we need to keep looking. I would assume.
So, yes, so the plan, Priscilla is temporary. She's helping out. She's offered a few minutes. But the plan is to hire somebody into a permanent position.
Yeah.
That will be for planning board and ZBA. And that was the plan with Tom, as Tom was going to be permanent ZBA and planning board.
Okay, so we're still actively looking for that position?
Yes, we are.
Yes.
Yep, and we had talked to Priscilla the, the 18th on that.
And the selectmen have been advised that, that the two boards are going to do that, look for one person, and they did not raise any objections, they, they think it's fine. So I think we're cool there.
And Mr. Chairman, is this other piece of paper that's, um, that is titled Notice of Job Posting Town of Brookfield, is this what's out there right now?
There is not out there right now. This is what we had out there. Um, I, I don't know if we want to make any changes to this. I mean, the, the plan, actually, I do know, we're gonna make changes to incorporate the ZBA in this. So I just wanted to put a copy in here so everybody had a copy of what, what we had posted before, so they have something to pair it to, and I doctored it up and make the new one. So. And that is it for old business. Um, we talked about the master plan. I'm still meeting on the first Thursday of the month, so we're gonna meet on June 6th. Um, I think we need to have a very good strategic meeting on the 6th to determine what's the first step we're gonna take in getting this thing rolling. Uh, because we've got all the information, we just need to go through and hammer out the master plan one section at a time. So. I think it's important we have a copy of the old master plan, too, because it's vital.
I do have a copy of it here.
Yeah, because it's, there's some really good stuff in there, and I, no sense reinventing the wheel, we don't have to. Yeah, and the latest master plan is online, too, so.
Yeah.
I can, I don't know if we want to print it all out.
I don't know.
It's probably here somewhere, isn't it? It's going. We should have a copy of the rules of procedure right in our books.
Oh.
Oh, I have.
Yeah, I think that, uh, probably had a copy put in here.
Yeah.
But if you don't have one, I can.
No, matter of fact, I vaguely remember seeing it up there, it may be in here.
There you go.
Yep. So something like this. I thought it was in here. I remember, I started, I remember seeing it.
We could always get your copy of it.
Yep. It is, it's under news, the ZBA and the, and the, and the job description, August 9th, 2018.
It's 06, right?
It's on the website.
2006, right there. Can you say that again, Frank?
So the, uh, the, uh, job description is there, August 9th, 2018. It's under new, the news, they on the website.
By a century's of work, Dr. Jim, this would be the end. Okay, excellent. Thank you. Hi, Priscilla.
Hi. I'm being, my planning board meeting got over early, so I forgot to come over and see if you wanted me to finish up the meeting with you.
Well, you can have a seat if you have.
Yeah, okay.
So Priscilla, you weren't here, but we welcomed you.
You'll hear it on the.
You'll hear it when you hear the minutes.
Okay.
Well, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
You're welcome.
And, uh, thank you very much for getting the March 21st minutes. That was.
Yeah, I did quite, I always finish the hours.
It was unexpected.
Now, the, the one that, you did the other ones, the one, the meeting where I came and spoke to afterwards, you did those minutes?
No, that's the one that's remaining. That's the April 18th.
Did you want me, oh, that's the April 18th, okay.
Yeah.
All right. I'll do those, finish them up.
Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to also make sure we know that when the administrative assistant gets the draft minutes completed, she can email them to me and I can get them in the book, because we have five business days to get the draft available, so that, that should be done. Number two, it would be advisable to put on the planning board page where the draft minutes are kept. Many people ask, where are the draft minutes they've haven't been uploaded? We have decided that we don't want to upload our draft minutes.
Right.
Not my decision, it's the board's decision to do that. But we should at least tell the public that if you want to see the draft minutes, they are available here in the book. And then when we approve them, we sign them, and then they can go into the book as approved. We should make sure that keeps happening, since I keep getting emails about, where are the draft minutes, where are the draft minutes, where are the draft minutes? So.
Yeah, good. I'll need everybody's email, too, at some point, so that when, and if you want me to send draft minutes to everybody, that's what my practice is. And if you have, if I have any emails, I can do that.
Okay.
I have those.
What we're probably gonna do is we'll set you up with the password for administrative assistant email.
Okay.
And it's gonna be using your personal email. So.
All right.
Because 91A means if you're communicating through your personal email, it's subject to your, all your personal emails as well.
I was gonna create an email, but if you have one, that's great.
We have the administrative system, so we'll give you the password for that. And as well, we will set you up on the webpage. So if you want to do anything on the webpage, like upload the final draft minutes and that, you can do that as well.
Okay.
All right. Ed, you got any more?
Yes, just one last thing.
Yes, sir.
I was asked in the past to notify the board if there was any legislation that came in to, onto the governor's desk, passed. So we're kind of ahead of the curve. And it just so happens that the governor signed two different pieces of legislation, which are now law, and one is, one is for the zoning board, so you can have that.
Good, thank you.
And the one that is for us, planning board, is HB or House Bill 245, and it's relative to the planning board's procedure on flats. I believe you have a copy of the front one?
Yep.
245.
I have one.
Is that a different, oh. Take that one just for now. Now, if you, if you turn to your rules procedure, page 11, alongside the old copy, it's, um, it's under applications to the planning board. I like this law. And if you read the bill, it states that 676 calling for B, and it was amended. Now, as I interpret this, and if I'm wrong, someone tell me, we've already been doing this. So someone clarified the law, so there's no question that we can make it a shorter period of time. So I just wanted to make everybody aware that that, that's passed, it's in, it's in law, and that's the amended. You'll see it in bold on the second page where the actual change in legislation was made.
The other is 15 days.
Yep. And it says 21 on the, uh.
Yep.
So it basically gives us the authority to make it a shorter period of time. Am I interpreting that correctly? It's a simple change, but apparently somebody had issues with it, so they cleaned it up. So we were, along with the rules of procedure for the, the gravel pit inspections and the other change we spoke of, what was the first one that we spoke of?
Changing the, the Monday.
The times, the times. And then that, so there's, there's three things so far.
Yep.
That the rules of procedure will have to be, I guess it really has to be changed.
This set doesn't have to be changed, because this meets the era, I said. Says we can specify a shorter period.
It's 21 days.
Okay, great, okay. Only two.
Yep.
Stay correct.
Okay, so that's planning, what's ZBA?
What is the ZBA? What's the ZBA changed?
The ZBA is that, that instead of having 30 days, we now have 45 days on which to vote the hearing. So it's given, given us more time to, to, before we have a vote the hearing, from the date we get the, uh, the request for hearing.
And that's helpful.
That's 15 extra days, yeah. Because, you know, I, I only check that box when I'm in here once every couple of weeks, although the selectmen's administrative assistants keeping an eye on for me, too. But it, it's helpful for towns like Brookfield that don't have regular staff in Monday through Friday to watch for things like that.
And do you have anything in your rules of procedure you might need to change relating to this?
We're, we, the ZBA is currently in process of completely reviewing and updating our rules of procedure. Priscilla's aware of that, she's gonna help me with that. And we have to hold another public hearing. We've held one public hearing so far. We need to hold another one, and I'm, I'm waiting until I can get a clean edited draft of our last meeting. Unfortunately, that's when Tom got sick and it never got completed. So once I do that, that has to be made publicly available, put on the website for 30 days, and also a copy of it here, and then I can hold the next, the next hearing on it. So I can actually get this in, the next draft. And then we, you know, and then if we edit it again, clock starts all over again. But the last time the ZBA rules of procedures were edited was 1989. Or, not, there was some made, some change made in 96. All of the RSA's were wrong, all the reference, there was a lot of stuff that were, it was incorrect, and so that's why I'm trying to stand up for it.
That's 1989.
Yeah, yeah, right, yeah. Yeah, we were all kids then.
Yeah.
Remember, zoning really didn't start in our town until 72, is when we enacted our zoning ordinance, I believe. First one, something like that.
And as the, as the governor signs bills, because I think there were, there were some more planning-based and zoning-based bills that came through, so as soon as they come through, because I get emails.
Yeah.
That they were signed.
Thank you very much.
And then we bring them in.
That's, that's very helpful, thank you.
So big heads up. Instead of getting slammed on the new book and having to go through it all at once and figure out what we need to address.
That's a whole other conversation.
Yeah. All right, thank you, I appreciate it. Um, do we have any public comments? Very none. Uh, member comments? I have a member comment. Uh, it was on government oversight Wednesday, and just make a suggestion that the members on the audit needs to be updated.
Oh, I can change that.
No. All right, any other member comments? Hearing none. Meeting adjourned.